The Honorable Chief Justice and Associate Justices of the Supreme Court of North Carolina. Oh yes, oh yes, oh yes. The Supreme Court of North Carolina is now sitting for the dispatch of business. God save the state and the power of the court.
Good morning. Before I call our first case, the court would like to extend a warm welcome to clerks and magistrates from the UNC or from our North Carolina Judicial Branch there at the UNC School of Government and UNC School of Government staff that are accompanying them. Welcome to our court today. Also, joining us are students and teachers from Faith Christian School in Rocky Mount and interns from the John Locke Foundation. You are welcome as well. Our first case for this morning is the Richmond County Board of Education versus Brenner et al. I'll note that Justice Dietz is recused in this case. We will hear from the appellate.
Mr. Chief Justice, and may it please the court. My name is Craig Shower. I represent the State Treasurer Brad Briner and the State Controller Nels Roseland. I'd like to reserve five minutes for rebuttal. I believe the arguments we present in this case are straightforward, but I do anticipate questions from the court. I plan to quickly review our arguments and then make myself available for the court's questions. The State Board of Education has filed an action upon a judgment against the state. But to sue the state, the board must allege a waiver of sovereign immunity. The board has not alleged a waiver here. While the board's claim in the first lawsuit was a quorum claim which does waive immunity, this is a different lawsuit with a different claim. And there is no waiver of sovereign immunity in this claim. Therefore, sovereign immunity bars the board's claim, and the case should have been dismissed. Second, even if there was a waiver, the board's claim is defective because the board does not have an executable judgment. The board's complaint points to a summary judgment order that lacks a monetary amount owed by the state. The board tried to solve for this problem by referencing a mandamus order that did include a monetary amount. But the Court of Appeals reversed that order. That order is a legal nullity. Thus, the board only has a summary judgment order that does not state an amount owed, which means that the board lacks a judgment that can serve as the basis for an action upon the judgment. With that, I welcome any questions from the court on the arguments we presented.
So what is the extent of remedies available when in this situation? The court found that the diversion of funds from the education, from the Board of Education in Richmond County was unconstitutional. What's the extent of what a court can do?
So looking to the first action with the quorum claim, I think you can find three remedies were available to the Board of Education. First, you had the judicial system determine that a constitutional right had been violated, which is meaningful. Second, the board was able to seek an injunction, which that request was mooted because in light of the lawsuit, the General Assembly actually changed the law. So the board actually got the relief it was seeking going forward as a result of the lawsuit, even though not necessarily because of an injunction being entered in the lawsuit. Third, you had the court, the court is able to determine a monetary amount to assign to a constitutional violation, which is informative of the General Assembly should the General Assembly deem to appropriate money to pay for the judgment. In other words, there's a judicial assertion or judicial determination of what the monetary value of that constitutional right is. But once those three remedies are provided, the creditor at that case, or in this case the board, the judgment creditor, does not have an ability to execute on the judgment, which makes the purpose of an action upon a judgment lacking because the only reason you would file an action upon a judgment is to attempt to collect on the original judgment, which you cannot do when you have a judgment against the state.
Would the theory be that under this type of constitutional claim, that once the court recognizes an amount, that is an amount that continues on regardless of whether the judgment is renewed? And if at some point a General Assembly were to decide it wanted to remedy any constitutional violations, it could at that point go back and discern to whom the funds should be distributed?
Yes, Your Honor. You know, whether, looking back at the original judgment, whether you're five years, 15 years, 25 years away, you still have a judgment against the state. The judgment doesn't disappear at the end of 10 years. You're just not able to execute on it under Section 1-306 of the general statutes. But when it comes to a judgment against the state, you're not able to execute on it anyways. And so whether you're five, 15, 25 years away, you still have a judgment against the state, it is a valid judgment. The ability to collect on that is always the same remedy at any period of time, which is to petition the General Assembly for an appropriation of funds.
If we agree with you that Cal III reversed the mandamus order, and so therefore there is no judgment that's been reduced to a specific amount, do we need to reach the arguments that you're making about sovereign immunity?
Your Honor, you don't. That would be a more narrow conclusion of the case. I would say that the interest of the treasurer and the controller in this case is beyond just this narrow case. They often find themselves nominal defendants in several cases. And so they are, I believe, we are asking for a broader ruling on sovereign immunity to avoid the burden of this litigation going forward. But the court would be able to resolve it more narrowly by determining that there is not an executable judgment that could be enforced in the first place. Well, like I said, I'm happy to elaborate on any question or address any questions the court may have. I do feel like our arguments were straightforward. And so what I'd like to do, if there are no further questions, is reserve additional time to respond to any questions the court may have during rebuttal.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
We'll hear from the appellate.
Mr. Chief Justice, Associate Justices of the North Carolina Supreme Court, if it pleased the court, I'm George Crump. I represent the Richmond County Board of Education. I'd like to... The board wishes to address four major points that the appellate just raised. One is that the Board of Education did not allege a waiver of sovereign immunity. What the board, the board did not allege a waiver of sovereign immunity. And the reason the board didn't allege it is that the state of North Carolina does not have sovereign immunity on this action. And the board stated in its complaint, the state of North Carolina does not have sovereign immunity. Second point that the appellate makes, no executable judgment. The appellate is using the two words, executable judgment, as a hyphenated word. They're two words. It's not one hyphenated word, it's two words. The board, the board's judgment, the prior judgment, and also the new judgment which the board is seeking, cannot be enforced by judicial process. And ever since Cal III, the board acknowledges this. So the old judgment cannot be enforced by judicial process. The new judgment will not be enforced by, cannot be enforced by judicial process. But the board's still entitled to a judgment. We're still, whether it can be enforced or not, the board's entitled to a judgment. The, um, no monetary amount, um, that is, um... I believe that's the second issue in the, in the app, in the board's brief. The board does have a monetary judgment. And the judgment, it was in two parts, but it was in the same proceeding. It's in the same case. And we have Judge Morgan's determinational liability. And that was, I believe, in 2014. And a part of Judge Morgan's summary judgment order, he ordered, he ordered the defendants to render an accounting. He ordered the defense to render an accounting. Didn't, he didn't order the school board to render an accounting, didn't order the school board to do discovery. He ordered the defense to render an accounting. Don't know, not putting blame, don't know who did not render the accounting, but the fact is, there was no accounting. There was no accounting of how much money was owed to Richmond County Board of Education. And it's very simple, very simple case. The unconstitutional statute was passed, it was effective like July 1st, 2011. Cal, Cal II affirmed, Cal II affirmed the order, summary judgment by Judge Morgan. Cal II was filed September 1st, 2015. On September 19th, 2019, the General Assembly, in their wisdom, amended the statute. So you have a fixed amount. July 1st, 2011 to September 18th, 2015, fixed amount. These are smart guys. They've got, they've got the resources. They can pick up the phone, half a day's work, maybe half an afternoon's work. Just put down that the school board is owed $272,300. But they didn't do it. So now the school board's got to go back to court. And it did go back to court. And it got an order from the Honorable Donald W. Stevens, that the amount owed to Richmond County Board of Education is $272,300. So we've got a monetary amount. Next thing I want to, but this before I get to our argument.
I have a question. So you, if I heard you correctly, you're conceding that you're bound by Cal III, which says this essentially can't be enforced. So help me understand, what's the practical value to the school board of renewing this judgment that can't be enforced? I mean, it seems like your remedy is to go to the legislature and seek an appropriation.
That's, Judge Allen, that's not, that's not a legal remedy. What that would be at this point is petitioning for grievance. Richmond County Board of Education petitions the legislature for $272,300. It's not a legal remedy. The chances, the board would contend, the chance of getting paid on petition on grievance to the legislature is zero. But the board contends that if it has a judgment, or it's entitled to a judgment, if it has a judgment, that judgment's good for 10 years. That judgment will be good through 2036. And there's a reasonable possibility that the General Assembly will pay it. And...
You think that, that they're not going to pay, you've already gotten a judgment that says that the money was improperly diverted, but you don't think they'll honor that if the judgment's not renewed? You think they're more likely to?
No, I don't, I don't want to say my opinion, personal opinion.
I'm just trying to understand.
But the board, if this case stops today, or when the Honorable Supreme Court of North Carolina reemits its decisions, if it stops, the board has no legal remedy. And petitioning the legislature, would you please, in your gracious wisdom, give us $272,300? The chance is just zero. But if we have a judgment, a judgment is a legal liability. And the, the two leading cases...
Before you go there, can I ask a sheen on what Justice Allen was asking? On the practical import in Cal III, the Court of Appeals emphasized the remedy at the ballot box. Does having a judgment pending, an actual legal liability, doesn't that change the dialogue in terms of legislative elections? Send someone to Raleigh who will pay our bills. And if we're going to emphasize that there's a political remedy for this problem, doesn't having a legal liability pending against the legislature make a difference?
Justice Riggs, that would be, that would be the decision of the board. That's not a legal decision, it would be the decision of the board. But what we have is, we have the people in North Carolina, and then we have three equal branches of government. We have the judiciary, the legislature, the executive branch. And the, the order in this case is, from the judiciary, that Richmond County Board of Education has a judgment. The state of North Carolina has to pay it. They must honor the judgment. If they don't honor the judgment, then the board's remedy is at the ballot box. The board has been quiet. The board's walked the high road. We did not prevail in Cal III. That's 2017. We've walked the high road. We've not been trashing the legislature. We haven't been going to the people. The board would argue it's entitled to a judgment. Now, I'm going to address why it's not futile, why it's not futile. And judgment's good for 10 years, but 2010 years from now, let's say seven, eight years from now, board hasn't been paid anything. There's a judgment, the legislature's got to do you to pay it. The board very well, at that time, might decide to take its case to the people, but it's not made that decision yet. The two leading cases are Smith versus State and Cal III. Those are two leading cases. And, um, the course for me was Smith versus State. They had Dr. Capel Smith into a contract with state of North Carolina and Broughton Hospital to be a director six years. And he brought a contract action and said, state of North Carolina breached the contract. I'm a medical doctor. Yeah, I make sacrifices. I'm entitled to compensation. Well, the state says, that's wonderful, but sovereign immunity bars your suit. And then they, it goes up to the Supreme Court. And Justice Sharp says, it's just a statement in connection with the whole thing. "We would not thus discredit our state, whose reputation for integrity and fiscal responsibility is evidenced by the AAA rating of its bonds and the fact that it has not defaulted upon obligation since its readmission into the Union in 1868." And that's until the day of that opinion, March 2nd, 1976. That's 108 years. The great state of North Carolina in 100 years didn't default on any obligation. And we'll take those chances. We're willing to take those chances. You give us to 2036, the great state of North Carolina can honor this judgment. Now, the dissenting opinion is State versus Smith. Justice Lake, very well reasoned decision. Here's what he says. He says, "The state is taking away the doctor's sovereign immunity." The court, the Supreme Court, the North Carolina, is taking away the doctor's sovereign immunity. Lo and behold, if he prevails, Dr. Capel cannot enforce a judgment. And it's an exercise in futility. It's an exercise in futility. And therefore, the majority was incorrect in granting, in ruling that on a contract action with the state, the state's not barred by sovereign immunity. Now, what's all this mean? It means that the dissent is, if you've got unenforceable judgment, it's futile. Well, the majority, by implication of the North Carolina Supreme Court, 1776, says no. It's not futile. You don't have, judgment creditors don't have to come into court and prove the solvency of their, of the debtor. It's not futile. What the judgment debtor is entitled to is a judgment. Now, a practical matter and a persuasive authority. North Carolina School Board Association, 2008, got a very large judgment against the state under North Carolina Constitution, Article 9, Section 7, B. Well, they came, wasn't honored, wasn't honored at all. Now, it was partially paid, but very little out of it, very small percentage was partially paid. They come back down on Fayetteville Street, it's Superior Court, and they renew the judgment. March 6, 2019, they renew that judgment. And that's in the appendix, we put that, the order in the appendix, page 5 and 6. So what you have is, and sovereign immunity was that the school, that the state raised was, don't have an executable judgment. Well, they just gave short shrift to that. Now, practical matter. The board is entitled to a judgment. It's entitled to a judgment of $272,300. The legislature may pay it, they may not. But we got to 2036. And something major's going to happen on March the 6th, 2029, three and a half years from now. Three and a half years, something, something major's going to happen. That judgment in favor of the school board, $729 million, is either going to be satisfied or it's going to be wiped off the books. It's unenforceable. And, and, and the, the appellate stated that, talk about judgment's been good for, he mentioned like five, five, 10, 25 years. Judgment's only good for 10 years. That's $729 million is going to be wiped, unless they pay it, it's going to be wiped off the book, books, on March 6, 2029, three and a half years. Well, that gives the Board of Education six and a half years. It's a whole lot easier to collect $272,000 than it is to collect $729 million plus $272,300. All they're out of, on March the 6th, 2019, all they're out of, all they're looking at owing is $272,300. You've got schoolchildren, they're not from Richmond County, but you've got schoolchildren. How do you lose? I mean, certainly, we can persuade the board, I mean, the legislature on John Street, we got schoolchildren in Richmond County, and $272,300 would make a difference. How they not pay it? Then, Justice Riggs, if they don't pay it, it'd be up to the board. Do we want to go to the people? Or if they not paid, obeyed a judicial order, do we go to the people? And that would be their decision, but they have not done it at this time.
Counsel, I may have misheard. Is the judgment in this case a legally enforceable judgment?
It's a legal judgment, but it's not an enforceable judgment.
Not legally enforceable?
It's not judicially enforceable. But again, for over 108 years, the state of North Carolina never defaulted on an obligation. And so much can happen in 10 years. You have, you have, the disposition of the legislature's last 10 years has not been to pay the judgment. But legislative bodies change. 10 years is a long time. Other thing that can happen is, we could have a legislature who's willing and ready to pay this judgment, but they're not able. And we could have, we'd have the Great Depression number two, Great Recession number two, just might not be able to pay it. But, but the board is entitled to a judgment. In other words, that board's entitled to a judgment.
Can I ask you to look at this from the perspective of what the elements are for an action on a judgment?
Okay.
And isn't it true that there's just basically two elements? That you have, there's an existence of an underlying valid judgment and that the judgment debt is still outstanding? Aren't those the only two elements necessary to have an action on judgment?
Just, Earl, as you're saying, that the elements are a prior judgment, has to have a date, it had to be within 10 years to renew on it.
Right.
You're correct, Your Honor.
And aren't there other circumstances in which during some period of time, the judgment may not be legally enforceable, but it later could become legally enforceable? For example, if, based on the status of the defendant, there might be some disability, so if someone's in the military, perhaps they're overseas, you can't collect while they're overseas, but then they come back, that you can collect. There are, there are other reasons why a judgment may not, at a particular point in time, be legally enforceable.
Justice Earl, that's exactly why. And what we have is, yeah, and we put this in our brief, that the, the Supreme Court determines the contours of sovereign immunity. You determine the contours of sovereign immunity. You had, you're the Supreme Court. And we can, we contend that, in the original case, Cal I, there was sovereign immunity. And that sovereign immunity should continue. It should continue. But if it did continue, and you had to reason again, what you have is, you have every judgment creditor in the history of the state of North Carolina, every judgment creditor... creditor in the history of the state of North Carolina, every judgment creditor. And the courthouse door is open to every judgment creditor in the state of North Carolina, but according to the, according to the appellate, but one, Richmond County Board of Education. Doesn't matter how unconscionable that original case was, that, that, that matter how unconscionate it was, once they get a judgment, they can renew the judgment. The School Boards Association, $729 million is walked down Fayetteville Street, they get a judgment. Richmond County Board of Education tries to get a judgment and get a full court press. They're not two classes, should be, there shouldn't be two classes of judgment creditors, and the lowest class is a school board who's trying to help children. These people aren't trying to help themselves. Next month, December, they're going to spend most of December going to Christmas programs, Christmas pageants. They're not in this for themselves, they're trying to help people. The, but as Justice Earl says, the reason these creditors seek the judgment, it's good for 10 years, even though they might not be able to execute, that the other judgment creditors are, are able to access legal prosecution and execute, but there's just nothing there. But they still have like 10 years. People's, people's forces change, these defendants, their forces change. And I mean, I've seen, we all have, we've all seen people that are just bumping on the bomb, and 10 years later, they're, yeah, they're doing so well. And we just, Richmond County Board of Education, Richmond County Board of Education wants to be treated as any other judgment creditor in the state of North Carolina. And we realize that we can't use judicial, as Justice Burger says, we can't use judicial process to collect the judgment. Also, every other judgment creditor in the state is getting interest. You can't get interest against the state of North Carolina. I mean, that 8% doesn't apply to the, you know, against the state of North Carolina. You can put $272,300 today in an index fund, and 10 years from now, you can pull that $272,300 out of the index fund, and you still got a ton of money. There's no interest, there's no interest. Mr. Chief Justice, it's, time's drawn to a close. I'm concluding. Okay? Any members have, Mr. Chief Justice or Associate Justice be welcome to, I've got about three minutes. Okay. I'm going to do two conclusions, okay? If it pleased the court, well, two conclusions. The Court of Appeals below stated, "We hold that a party with a valid judgment against the state or other governmental entity has the right to bring a renewal action on that judgment under GS 1-47. The Board, Richmond County Board of Education, requests that the Supreme Court of North Carolina affirm majority opinion of North Carolina Court of Appeals." The second closing, very short, I can find it. Counsel spent the night, last night here, ate breakfast this morning, and saw a great quote, and I'm going to share it with you. I'd like, maybe some people behind me will listen to this. It's by Jim Valvano. "Don't give up. Don't ever give up." Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Chief Justice. I do have a few points I'd like to make in light of the remarks of Mr. Crump. First, Mr. Crump said that he's entitled to a judgment, or the board's entitled to a judgment, even if it's not an enforceable judgment. That is absolutely true for the quorum claim that the board brought, and it got a judgment. And that judgment has not disappeared. It cannot be executed on, but that judgment is still standing today. What they're not entitled to is a judgment for an action upon a judgment, because there hasn't been sovereign immunity, and there's no practical benefit of an action upon a judgment in this case, because it would yield them the exact same thing which they have today, which is a judgment that they cannot execute on. And that really goes to the practical value, an issue Justice Allen and Justice Riggs raised. There is really no practical value, let me say that more clearly, there is absolutely no practical value to an action upon a judgment in this case. Mr. Crump says that if he had a judgment, it would be good for 10 years. I think he's paraphrasing the law in that situation. A more precise articulation of the law is, if they had a new judgment, they could potentially execute on it for another 10 years. It's not that the judgment disappears after 10 years, it's just that your ability to execute on it is barred by the statute of limitations under Section 1-306. The judgment does not go away. So as of today, even though they cannot execute on the judgment under the statute and because of the appropriations clause, they still have a judgment. The new lawsuit yields them nothing new and nothing beyond what they already have today, which goes to the great question about political advocacy. Because they have a judgment against the state, they stand in the exact same position they would if the court were to allow an action upon a judgment perceived in this case, because they already have a judgment against the state determining the constitutional rights been violated, and they can petition the General Assembly saying that this judgment hasn't been paid, please pay it.
So it's hard for me to imagine that the General Assembly would say, well, we would pay it, but they didn't renew it, and so the statute of limitations is passed. It's the moral force, isn't it, of the judgment? I mean, they've conceded that they can't enforce it, so...
I agree, Your Honor. And the moral force of the judgment doesn't change if they're allowed to bring an action upon a judgment, because they find themselves in the exact same situation. The judgment...
But that's your assessment, but if our court has left them in the political arena, why isn't it their assessment that matters? And if there's no practical effect, what, what is the need to prevent it? Why is it harmful to your clients if there's no practical effect?
Well, there's no benefit. There is a practical effect on the treasure and the control, which is they have the burden of dealing with litigation, but it's a litigation that's not accompanied by any benefit to the board. And I think while, and I don't think that's a subjective assessment, Your Honor, I think that's an objective assessment that the court can make, that there is no practical benefit yielded by a judgment that cannot be executed on and cannot be enforced by court. The remedy is the political realm, it's down at Jones Street, it's not in front of the court system. This goes to the question raised by Justice Earl, you know, could it become legally enforceable? I'm not aware of a situation in this context where a judgment may become legally enforceable, given that we're dealing with the appropriations clause in the Constitution, but if it were to change, again, the board already has a judgment. The judgment that they have would become equally enforceable in the future as if they had gotten a judgment for an action upon a judgment.
But not if they failed to renew it.
Well, Your Honor, I disagree with that. I think if they don't renew it, and to be clear, they're not actually renewing it, they're getting a new judgment on the original judgment that they got from the other lawsuit, they today have a judgment. They can't execute on it, but the judgment does not disappear after 10 years, it just cannot be executed on based on the statute of limitations for execution. The state may, or a party in another situation, may decide not to assert the statute of limitations and could allow them to execute on the judgment 10, 12 years later. That's a defense that could be waived, because the judgment still exists after 10 years. So the board still has a judgment, and that judgment is something that if they were able to enforce it in the future, they'd be equally able to enforce the existing judgment as they would the new judgment. Which leads me kind of to my closing remark, which is that the board has to be treated the same as other judgment creditors, but the board acknowledges that they're not the same as other judgment creditors. They admitted that they cannot execute on the judgment. They just raised the great point that they cannot collect interest on the judgment, and the third reason why they're different is they also cannot file an action upon a judgment to collect on the existing judgment. So absent any question from the court, we would ask that it reverse the Court of Appeals and remand this case for dismissal. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Mr. Clark?
All right. Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes. The Supreme Court of North Carolina will be in recess for 15 minutes. God save the state and this honorable board. (gunshot)